I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Earl.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And Trustee Bond.
Here.
We're all here this evening. I'll move on to public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity. I can see that several people have signed up to speak today, breaking with the norm just a little bit. I'm going to hold everybody to the two minutes this evening, just so we can keep the meeting moving along. But if you can come up in the order that you signed in, or any other order is fine, and address the board, that would be perfect.
Good evening. Okay, just checking, it's working. Good evening, Village Board. Thank you for having us again this evening. My name is Lisa Casbarian. I'm here again to respectfully ask that the board begin the process for reviewing and revisiting the municipal codes surrounding backyard hens through the plan commission. At the meeting, a couple of weeks back, we heard from a variety -- or we heard a variety of facts and opinions about the emotional support chickens in the Foxmore subdivision. In my conversations with neighbors after the meeting, my own personal takeaway was that it's not simply the idea of residential backyard hens, as it is the quantity, position of coop proximity to lot line, social media posts about loopholes in the laws, and disregard for, you know, potential neighbors' opinions or municipal codes being broken. As I mentioned previously, my daughter last year had the opportunity to show hens for 4H at the Kendall County Fair and has participated in the poultry spin club this year through 4H. In my opinion, the benefit to reviewing the code would certainly potentially avoid the legal slippery slope of whether or not the reasonable accommodation of six hens is in fact reasonable. Many other surrounding communities have already updated these antiquated codes to reflect permitting backyard fall with proper regulation in place. In my opinion, if the board began the process, it would allow the emotional support chickens to become a non-issue as code was revised, with the opportunity to permit, inspect, and license the homeowner and coop following provisional guidelines until it's gone through the proper channels. Obviously, the home in question would need to thin out the flock, but the situation is certainly gaining traction and attention with the recent article in the Chicago Tribune and needs to be addressed in the most appropriate way possible. I've spoken with various neighbors in my own community, and numerous families are in support of backyard hens in this approach. Thank you for time and consideration in this delicate matter.
Hello, my name is Liliana Casbarian, and I am here to talk about why I think Montgomery should be able to have backyard hens. I think Montgomery should allow chickens because they are nice and sweet and make good companions. They give us food to eat by laying eggs almost every day. This is my second year that I'm showing chickens for the Kendall County 4H Fair. It's really fun because you get to learn about the ornithology and the life cycle of a chicken. You learn showmanship, which means that you handle a chicken in the right way. You learn about the breed, their characteristics, their feathers, et cetera. Chickens help me learn responsibility by taking care of them, feeding them, making sure they have fresh water, cleaning their coop, going to store to choose the right brand of food. It's giving me a really deep connection with the beautiful creature. When they free-range, they can help clean -- clear the yards of weeds and insects. You can also give them dried mealworms, pumpkin seeds, sunflower seeds, and cracked corn. They really enjoy them and eat all of them. It also helps with composting if you give them leftover melon peel, strawberries, grapes, and much more. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Hello again. I'd say good evening, but it's not a good evening. We're here going on week six of my husband's health being paraded around like a joke, based on some out-of-context Facebook posts. I'm here to clear a few of those up. Sarah Klosterman was a woman who supposedly befriended me on Facebook to try and find a weak case against my husband from across the street, where the other neighbors that were in here last week live as well. So there's no possible way that they could even be affected by these birds. Chad, my other neighbor, who supposedly used cancer as an excuse for why they are opposed to his health while I watched him chain-smoke three cigarettes on his patio over the weekend, so I guess cancer's not really a big concern to him. And it's pretty deplorable to use that as an excuse for why chickens shouldn't be allowed when there's people, like my grandmother, who didn't survive cancer. And she owned chickens, so I guess, again, weak excuse. I have tried to be kind to my neighbors. I have offered them food from my garden. I offered them when we moved in, if any of them needed anything, any of them had any concerns, emergencies, issues, please come to us. If their kids had anything, we are always home and we are always there to make sure that they're safe. I have told them that if they had any issues with the chickens, to please let us know, and nothing has been addressed to us. Any issue I've had, like when his son threatened to kick my dog last summer, I addressed with them multiple times, until the authorities were involved, because it went unaddressed multiple times. Again, a couple weeks back, another incident, and that's when this started. That incident, that police report, is the same timeframe that all of this started, and it's because they'd rather teach their kids vengeance than respect. This isn't even about the chickens. And the 53 supposed chickens that I had, I bought an incubator out of pocket to bring to my son's preschool and bring all the chicks that had hatched. I had a friend that lives at a farm down in Waynesville in southern Illinois, and she let me borrow, you know, she let me have the eggs to incubate to document the process. I brought them into his class, and the kids got to see them. They went back to her farm afterwards. The chicks that were supposedly in the 53, that's where they hatched from. So I'm just going to clear that one up, since everyone wanted to throw that word around there as well.
Do you have anything to specifically address to the board about the question? We're not here to litigate, you know, disagreements that you may or may not have with neighbors.
Well, they got their chance to defend themselves last week, and you didn't stop them, and you didn't let me continue.
Well, I think they were going on about the issue that you guys were talking about.
I am talking about the issue.
Okay.
I'm -- this is all the reason that all of this started.
Okay, and that's fine. We're not litigating that tonight. The two minutes that you -- of your opportunity have expired. If you have --
Okay, my husband can speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm glad to be here today, speak with you all, and appreciate your time you've sacrificed. As my understanding, there's been a lot of conjecture, misinformation, and bias on the topic of my emotional support animals. I'm here to clear these issues up and bring forth several issues of my own. First, I would like to deal in some black and white. There's no gray area, just facts. Is the fact that I served in the United States Marine Corps? Is the fact that I sustained an injury that will affect me for life? Is the fact that I have a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs specifically prescribing a flock of chickens as emotional support animals? Is the fact that a lot has been taken from me? My health has been taken from me? My future has been taken from me? My career path has been taken from me? And now my emotional support animals are trying to be taken from me? I do have to say it's very disheartening to know that the legitimacy of my health and support have been brought into question. It's also illegal. According to HUD, a housing provider also may not ask an applicant or tenant to provide access to medical records or medical providers, or provide detailed or extensive information or documentation of a person's physical or mental impairments. You've asked specifically for access to my medical provider and have used the threat of my cooperation as a means of corrosion. Both of these are specifically stated as illegal according to the Fair Housing Act. Calling into question the legitimacy of my letter is also illegal. According to HUD, documentation is sufficient if it establishes that an individual has a disability and that the animal in question will provide some type of disability-related assistance or emotional support. Obviously, it was not sufficient for you, since you decided to go on a witch hunt claiming that it was fabricated. My personal daily struggle has been paraded around and made a mockery of, because some neighbors with personal vendetta in the city board that decide that spotlighting my personal life in a public setting would be a smart idea. Not only is that a disgusting way to act towards a person and their family, it is also against the law set forth by Housing and Urban Development. Quote, "Such information must be kept confidential and must not be shared with other persons unless they need the information to make or assess a decision to grant or deny a reasonable accommodation request, or unless disclosure is required by the law as in a court-issued subpoena requiring disclosure," end quote. The public should never have been made privy to anything more than the fact that I have these emotional support animals, and I was never issued any sort of subpoena. You have put me and my family through hell. We have been personally attacked online by a multitude of people. My privacy has been violated, my address has been made publicly known, and I've had to deal with the emotional torment as a consequence of your actions. If we're going to make a large deal out of the word loophole, then please let me put this in context. Chickens are going to be therapeutic to me whether or not they are documented as an emotional support animal. When I decided it was a course of action I wanted to take, the first act that I took was to see what the city ordinance states. Finding out the city ordinance is against chickens, again, does not make these animals any less therapeutic. If there was no city ordinance, then the chickens would not need to be prescribed. Since they are prohibited, then the only way to attain the chickens wouldn't -- is to get that prescription. This is the loophole that's been blown far out of proportion. Perfectly legal avenue is being taken based on the laws established by the Fair Housing Act. While I may not have been able to attend the past two meetings, I've heard the conversations that have transpired. The Fair Housing Act was mentioned only a few times, and it was very clearly misunderstood, misrepresented, and ignored. I'd like to pull a few excerpts from the Housing and Urban Development Special Notice clarifying the obligations of housing providers in regards to the Act. While dogs are the most common types of assistance animals, other animals can be assistance animals, end quote. This rules that chickens are legitimate in regards to assistance animals. For housing providers to determine requests for a reasonable accommodation, there are only two questions that can be used to determine the decision. The first is, quote, "Does the person seeking to use and live with an animal have a disability?" The second is, "Does the person making the request have a disability-related need for an assistance animal?" In regards to these two questions, where the answers to questions one and two are yes, the FHA Act in Section 504 requires the housing provider to modify or provide an exception to a no pets rule or policy to permit a person with a disability to live with and use an assistance animal. They list that the only two stipulations against reasonable accommodations are if the animal poses a direct threat, or they can cause physical damage to the property of others, and both of these are not met in this situation. When looking at cases, rejection cannot be based on mere speculation or fear about the types of harm or damage an animal may cause. My assistance animals are neither dangerous nor destructive, so when you tell me that, I can only keep six chickens because, quote, "Any more chickens would pose too great an impact on the adjacent properties," end quote, you are violating the HUD laws. I have 20 chickens, and almost half of them are miniature chickens which grow to no more than two pounds. These 20 chickens have been outside for a while now and have caused no actual disturbance. These animals literally have no personal or profound impact on anyone that is near us. We back a farm, so the only two houses that are in proximity are on the left and the right of us. The fact that the main source of complaints has been people who are across the street and span several houses down is laughable. A laying hen at its loudest reaches the same decibel as a normal human conversation. The wild birds that fly around in our neighborhood are louder and much more of a disturbance than a chicken can ever possibly achieve. This means that dog bark is louder than a chicken. Chickens put themselves asleep at around 8:00 p.m., so the noise level is none at that point forward until the next day. There's also no smell from the coop, so anyone who's trying to make that complaint or argument, again, shows a personal bias based on no facts at all. We've had several reporters and several citizens come to look at our coop, and all have commented that there is no smell. A dog lays more waste in one day than all of our chickens combined. Our coop is kept clean and is properly maintained. There have been people who have complained that they think the chicken poop is going to contaminate their soil. Well, this falls into a personal outcry, not any sort of real issue. I can go to Menards, Home Depot, and Lowe's right now and buy chicken poop fertilizer. This fertilizer is made with chicken poop and is used mainly for gardens. If chicken poop was detrimental contamination to the world, then why would it be sold by Home Depot, Menards, Lowe's, and be commonly used? Overall, our chickens have not, cannot, and will not disturb anyone. The Appin' Chihuahua that lives right next door to us is more vocal than all 20 of our chickens. It astounds me how we have had reporters and citizens come look at our coop so that they could see what's actually going on, but the people trying to make the rules did not even come and look to see what the current situation is before presenting us with the ridiculous and unlawful rules. Another unlawful rule presented is in regards to the chicken coop itself. The rules they're trying to be imposed are both illegal and absurd. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines a coop as "a cage or small enclosure for poultry" and also "a small building for housing poultry." What we have in our backyard falls perfectly in line with this definition. It is a chicken coop. There are no grounds to disqualify this as a chicken coop, because it is a small enclosure and/or a small house for housing poultry. Saying that we must tear down what we have now and purchase permits to put up a new one is illegal, or, quote, "A request for a reasonable accommodation may not be unnecessarily denied or conditioned on payment of a fee," or deposit, or other terms and conditions applied to applicants. What we have now is a chicken coop, and very well put together at that. There is nothing stating that the legitimacy of a chicken coop is based on where you buy it from or what material is used. Saying that we have to change the type of structure so that makes it fall into a category of a fixture that we need to pay a permit for is in always illegal. I would love to hear from any one of the administration or board what makes the chicken coop that we have not adequate. No one has been able to offer that answer yet. It seems that everyone is going out of their way to try to find and make up problems that have nothing to do with the issues at hand. The law is very clear in stating what we are allowed to have and do. When I provide the proper documentation of my emotional support animal letters, I also made sure that I printed out all the pertaining laws and highlighted all of these major points that I've had to address today. Obviously, people are not taking this seriously or playing the card of ignorance in an attempt to navigate around a legal obligation. If they had in fact read what I provided them with, most of this conversation would not be happening. It also shows how seriously this issue is being taken when a very simple letter is being misrepresented. The letter says a minimum of six chickens, not a maximum of six chickens. How a group of seven people on the committee can read a letter and come out with the same exact false understanding of what is said is astounding. I implore all here to read the actual law. It is very informative. I also implore you to actually read my emotional support animal letter. It is also very informative. If you really want to start accusing me of falsifying government documents, then maybe some sort of proof should be brought forth. Instead, I get to be subjected to your disability discrimination, which is clearly defined in the HUD Reasonable Accommodation Statement. Quote, "The Act also makes it unlawful for any person to refuse to make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford persons with disabilities equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling," end quote. Everyone has been so eager to make excuses about why they think that we shouldn't be allowed. Every time, someone brings up some other irrelevant point in an attempt to discriminate against me. This is illegal. These are my civil liberties that set forth in the Fair Housing Act. Reasonable accommodation that needs to be made is very simple. Leave everything the way that it is now. No one is negatively impacted by the fact that I have chickens, the number of chickens that I have, or the location of the coop. The HUD states that in their correspondence that the only situations that make an accommodation unreasonable and deniable are if it would impose an undue financial and administrative burden on the housing provider or fundamentally alter the nature of the provider's operations. Keeping everything how it is now would cost nothing for the provider and would in no way alter the nature of the provider's operations. Therefore, reasonable accommodation cannot be denied. The accommodations that are being requested are deemed reasonable. That is the law, not some subjective concept about our situation that everyone is so eager to get behind. I appreciate people who have come to support me and my family in this endeavor and the news agencies that actually decided to report the truth. As for the news agencies that decided to report false news without actually seeing the facts, I'll make your job a lot more simple for the next article that you want to post. It could read something along the lines of City of Montgomery and Board of Trustees under investigation by Housing and Urban Development for disability discrimination. Thank you for your time you've given. I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your day.
Mayor.
Thank you.
My only comment is going to be I disagree. You give them the two minutes, they're running the wrong.
I know, yeah. And I do appreciate that. If you do want to provide us with a copy of that, because I know you're reading very quickly, I didn't want to cut you off, as we've had a great amount of public comment on this issue, and I felt like it was appropriate that you be heard in this process. I do appreciate you coming this evening. If there's any other member of the public that wishes to address the board, and then I do have our attorney, Laura, to address the topic tonight.
Thank you.
My name's Nicole Jones. I live in Foxmore subdivision along with Viola's. I do not know them. I do live in a different part of the neighborhood. I do know that Wispy put an article out about your last board meeting, that in turn, one of our neighborhood watch administrators decided to post on there and leave for this family to be attacked for two days. Once the article that stated both sides of this story was posted, it was blocked. I personally said that you need to do what you need to do for your family. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm not saying that I agree with it. If that's what helps them, then that's what helps them. But if you're going to go after a veteran with support animals, then I suggest that you go through that neighborhood and you cite every other single person for a code violation, because there's another home on Shetland that's not, I don't know, not about six blocks, not even six blocks, six houses away from theirs, that I have pictures of, that has tires, multiple golf carts, multiple snowmobiles, all in front of their house, that looks like trash. When you drive by their house, you see a shed. We showed up unannounced. It doesn't smell. There is no smell. A full-grown chicken was the size of my hand being cut. So I think that you guys really need to reconsider this, because if you rip these animals from this family, they are going to be devastated. That would be like telling a disabled person in a wheelchair, hey, guess what? You can't have your service dog no more. I'm going to take it. It becomes a family animal. So I strongly consider that maybe one of you guys get your boots dirty. Maybe you, Mr. Bond, since you live in the neighborhood, could stop by there and simply say, hey, can you explain this to me? That's what my husband and I did. Why can't you guys?
Thank you.
So I showed chickens at the fair. Chickens are very clean if they are taken care of. Hens are quiet and fun animals, and they don't stink if they are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annalise Feeder, and I think that Montgomery should be allowed to have backyard hens, because they help you learn showmanship and responsibility. They have backyard -- by having backyard hens, you can learn so much about this amazing creature. And by feeding and watering and caring for them, you can learn many great things. You can learn about their food and their anatomy and their feathers. The chickens will help many people learn many great qualities. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Jones. You know, I grew up around here, and this town was very, very nice before. Never been to a town, meaning I came in here to see what kind of reaction you guys did, gave to about the whole chicken issue. Most of you guys are sitting here listening, but Mr. Heinz is like there's something wrong. There's so many dirty looks and eyes rolled. If you can't be open-minded and listen to this man who's served this country, for you to sit there and roll your eyes at him, maybe you shouldn't be on this board.
Maybe.
Maybe. Because to not have an open mind and actually go and talk to this family and see if the thing smells, see if it makes noise, you really can't make a decision one way or the other. I mean, you need an actual proof and actually to be there, instead of a bunch of people on Facebook bashing the family and saying this and that when there's no problem with them at all. We stood there for 20, 30 minutes. The only noise I heard was the birds flying over. We stood a foot away from the bird poop, couldn't smell one bit of it. So I mean, unless you guys actually go there and talk to them and see what's going on, there's no way you guys can make an actual decision without being biased and closed-minded like Mr. Heinz.
Thank you. And just to be clear, this isn't an issue that the board is deciding. This is an administrative issue that our staff has been working with them on. So if there's any other public comment, I would love to hear that this time.
Hello, my name is Tracy. I've lived in Foxmore for 14 years, and I just met this family just this last week. Britt and Luke opened their home to me. Well, actually, to everybody on Facebook who are very disgusting, I can't believe my neighborhood is like this. They're bullies. We have bullies in our neighborhood, don't we? And so when she said, oh, you know, anybody come check out the chickens, well, I don't live anywhere near you, but I went over there, and you know what? This is, that's great. It's wonderful. The chickens were fine. I was afraid. But I don't smell anything. They make no noise. But my thing about this is, which none of you have brought up, is Luke is a veteran. Veterans are dear to my heart, and the way everybody is going after this family is making me feel -- my heart right now is going crazy, because we don't attack the military. This young man signed up his life to defend us. Now he's got to defend his own life, because he needs to have animals for support, for coping? Does anybody know what PTSD is? I mean, we all have phones, let's Google it. It's not a fun thing to go through. This mother has two kids to raise and look after her husband? I mean, come on. And whatever you said just now about, I was watching your faces, rolling the eyes. You were looking over that way, talking to somebody else. Really? That's rude to a military. I'm disgusted with the Facebook page in Foxmore. You know who runs it and lets people say nasty things to this military family and other military families in my neighborhood? I don't like it. I don't like it one bit. I know maybe I'm just rambling, because for two minutes for me to talk, you know, but please, for the love of God, listen. Go to the house. How many people in our neighborhood have gone to your house? Two, maybe three?
Two.
Okay, and me, right? That was it?
Including you.
Okay, oh, including me, okay.
Two, where is it?
Well, anyhow, two. How many of you have gone to her house? You have, you have, and what did you think? It was really nice. No different than a farm setup or zoo setup? It was lovely. The neighborhood kids should be outside, playing outside, asking Britt if, you know, they can feed the chickens, have some fun. I don't know, I'm just rambling, but please, for the love of God, let Luke have his chickens. He served for us. This is why we're all standing here tonight, for Luke, wherever you are, Luke. But please, please think hard about this. The bickering with the wives and the mothers, the ladies, there's always going to be issues in a neighborhood, but please, for the love of God, it's the military. The military. Remember that he's a veteran. He signed up to protect us. That's it, amen? Please, you better do what you gotta do.
Thank you, Tracy. Ma'am? Is there any -- Ma'am? Ma'am? Excuse me, ma'am? You need to -- does she need to sign in?
No.
Thanks, Penny. All right, is there any other public comment? Do you want to cut anybody off? Okay. Before we do move on, because this is not a debate, I do want our attorney to kind of chime in on really the status of the situation.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to clarify again. We understand that this is a very difficult issue, that there's a lot of emotional things going on in the neighborhood, a lot of things on Facebook, and that is really outside of what the village is here to review. And it's outside of the scope, the first neighbor dispute is just outside of the scope of the village's purview. What the village is charged with evaluating is whether or not there has been a request for an accommodation and whether an accommodation can be made. That is what our view is limited to. A couple of things I wanted to clarify was that it has never been the village's intention for this to be litigated in an open discussion. The discussion has occurred because members of the public, as well as the petitioner, have come to board meetings and brought this issue to the attention in great detail. The details of the evaluation have not been provided by the board. Moreover, it has been clear since the beginning that the board was not going to evaluate whether or not they believed that it was a legitimate request or look into anything other than verifying what is allowed to verify under the Act, and that has been the position of the village board since this matter first came to its attention. So again, any other speculation or questions, that might have been brought up by members of the public, but our advice to the board and the board's position has always been that we can verify any medical statement in accordance with what the Act allows and no more. Finally, a couple of sections have been cited referencing a housing provider. And again, while it's true the village is doing its very best to evaluate this issue, to be respectful of all parties, and determine whether or not an accommodation can be made, and if so, what the parameters of that accommodation are. The village is not a housing provider. The village does not fall under the same, it is not a federally funded housing provider within the meaning of the Act, and it does not have the same obligations that a federally funded housing provider would. The village's obligations extend to its zoning ordinance and making changes with regard to the zoning ordinance only. It is not equivalent to somebody that's providing federally funded housing. So I did want to make that record, that statement clear for the record as well. And otherwise, to the extent that further discussions need to be had, they will be had in private with the interested parties, and we do not intend to have any further discussions in front of the village board or in front of the public.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I do appreciate those of you that came tonight to share your thoughts and your opinions, and do appreciate that. and do appreciate that, but we'll move on with the meeting at this point. I'll read the consent items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of May 29th, executive session minutes of May 29th, the building report from May of 2018, and the accounts payable FY '18 through June 7th, and the accounts payable for FY '19 through June 7th, and the cancellation of the June 19th committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee carry six zero. Thank you.
Items for separate action. The first one is recommendation of the Montgomery Development Fund Committee. This is Maine and Webster Partners LLC. That'll turn it over to Director Young for a summary of the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Montgomery Development Fund Committee met and reviewed an application for a $10,000 forgivable loan for Maine and Webster Partners LLC for improvements that they would like to complete at 109 North Main Street. This is the building that previously, many years ago, had been a grocery store. It's literally across the parking lot from where we sit in this building today. The partnership would like to do improvements to some of the sidewalk, flatwork, concrete that needs to be replaced, and also some roofing that needs to be repaired on the property, and have requested a $10,000 loan for approximately $11,000 worth of improvement that would be put into this address. At the same time, the same partnership, which also owns the adjacent building, which is literally attached at 105 North Main Street, is under review now with the committee in terms of a long-term, or I shouldn't say long-term, but a low-interest loan as a part of our other portion of the program, and that may be coming back to you at a subsequent meeting. So with that in mind, the committee has recommended that the board move forward to approve this forgivable grant.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments for staff on this item, on the recommendation?
I'd like to clarify the language. The word grant was just used. Is it a loan or a grant?
It's a forgivable loan. Apologize for the wording.
What are the terms of forgiveness?
The business has to be, there is a business now in place that is just been established as a cosmetology, excuse me, academy. They just said they're groundbreaking, or they're not groundbreaking, they're grand opening a couple of weeks ago. Anyway, they have to be there and in place for three years as a part of the loan agreement.
I've rented that building, and it was, it had a lot of masonry and roof needs, shall we say. That girl put an awful lot of money in that business for not owning the building, but she's been successful, I think, in four or five other areas, and she really made it look nice. In fact, she probably could have done it for the sign even. I mean, that sign is an expensive sign she put up.
This is just the recommendation, this first item. The second item would be whether or not the board agrees to go forward with this forgivable loan, and so the documentation would still have to be worked out and come back to you for final approval at a subsequent meeting.
And just to clarify, trustee Lee, it's not the business owner. It's not the cosmetology school, it's the applicant.
The property owner is actually the applicant.
The property owner, but, you know, I was in there over three years, but believe me, they hadn't had a lot of people in there, a couple that didn't last, but this one's going to last. In other words, you don't have to worry about the three years, I'm sure. Plus, by him fixing it, or her fixing it up so nice, that the business is going to stay there for a long time. Gene's been there since the 1900s maybe. Felix had his grocery store there, so they're not new to the community. And this is his son. It's, he's got more than one, he's got a daughter, all that, so he's kind of broken that down into different LLCs.
Okay.
I'm moved to accept the recommendation of the Montgomery Development Fund Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Call row?
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Yes.
I carry six zero. And the second item is the loan request. Are we not taking action on that tonight, or?
Well, you would direct, if you're so inclined, you would direct the staff and the finance department to put together the loan documents and then bring that back to you at a later date.
Okay. Getting a, seeing some nods. It appears to be the direction of the board to move forward with that. My only question is, I think this is the first time where we've had the building owner that's not tied to the business, and I presume that our ordinance either allows for that or somewhere in the loan document it would be tied to the business being operational for three years.
It has to be operational for three years, and we did actually have a similar situation, even though it's a lease-to-purchase. Technically, South Moon BBQ is only leasing the property now and intends to purchase, but we did the same type of forgivable loan for their elevator improvements.
Okay.
So we have done something similar to this, even though the cosmetology, I can't say that word, academy is not intending to purchase the property, nor is it for sale, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. So move forward with that, and that'll be on for a future meeting for approval. Moving on, we have items for discussion or newer unfinished business to come before the board?
I do. I'd like to say thank you to the Montgomery Police Department for their efforts yesterday